Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 13th, 2020 Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors meeting. My name is Tanya Bamford. I am Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Tonight, we are holding our first ever online meeting as we comply with Governor Tom Wolf's order to stay at home and do our part to flatten the curve during this pandemic. This is new territory for us and certainly an unforeseen environment to hold this meeting. On behalf of my fellow board members and township staff, we want to thank you for your patience as we attempt to conduct the business of the township in as safe and as transparent a manner as possible while complying with the state sunshine law. As we have always done in the past, our agenda and meeting packet can be found on the township website. Additionally, questions were able to be submitted in advance of the meeting via email. Before we begin our meeting, we want our residents to know that our thoughts are with them as they deal with so many issues as a result of these recent events. We know that these are uncertain times and even frightening times. And although we are apart, we are truly in this together. We were saddened to learn of the passing of one of our residents due to COVID-19, an 88-year-old male. Our hearts are with his family during this very difficult time. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence right now to mark his passing, as well as the passing of the others in our neighboring communities. Thank you. And now I will call the meeting to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll have a roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I will take a roll call of the Board of Supervisors in attendance for the April 13th, 2020 Board Meeting. Chair, Tanya Bamford.
Present.
Vice Chair, Matt Quigg. Supervisor Candace Chimera.
Present.
Supervisor Annette Long.
Present.
Supervisor Beth Staub.
Present.
Thank you. In addition to the Board of Supervisors, the following individuals are also participating in our meeting tonight. Township Solicitor Robert Iainozie, Township Manager Carolyn McCreary, Director of Planning and Zoning Bruce Shoup, Director of Public Works Kevin Costello, Director of Finance Brian Shapiro, Chief of Police Scott Bending, Director of Fire Services Bill Wegman, Director of Administration and Human Resources Anne Shade, Director of Recreation Floyd Schaefer, Director of Information Technology Rich Greer, and Public Information Coordinator Kelsey Whalen. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And now we're going to open up the floor for public comment. We had given people the opportunity to submit any questions or comments via email. I don't see any comments in, so we'll just move on. To Agenda Item Number Four, the announcement of executive session. I'll turn the floor over to Robert Iainozie, our Township Solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good evening. Since its last meeting on March 9th, 2020, the Board of Supervisors convened for two emergent executive sessions by way of a conference call. The first conference call was on April 1st, 2020, at 9:30 a.m. to discuss one personnel matter. And the second conference call was on April 13th, 2020, at 10 a.m., which was this Monday, to discuss three matters of potential litigation. The means of these conference calls and the subjects discussed on them are legitimate under Pennsylvania sunshine law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Agenda Item Number Five, Consider Approval of the Minutes for March 9th, 2020. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Six, Ratification of Emergency Declarations of March 18th, 2020 and March 26th, 2020. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Board of Supervisors approved a declaration of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic on March 18th, 2020, with a subsequent extension to the declaration on March 26th, 2020, to reflect the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's emergency declaration. Staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors formally ratify both the original declaration and the extension to memorialize the action done via email.
All things considered, I think this was a really smart move. Are there any questions from my fellow board members on this?
No.
No.
No. All right. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby ratify the declaration of emergency dated March 18th, 2020, and the extension of March 26th, 2020 relating to the COVID-19 pandemic. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seven. Consider the Approval of Conditional Use Written Decision and Order C-71 for Redners Market, 1200 Welsh Road Gasoline Filling Station. Bruce Shoup, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. I'd like to turn this over to the Township Solicitor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Shoup. On February 24th, 2020, the Board conducted a hearing upon Redners Market Inc.'s conditional use application, proposing a three-pump, six-bay gasoline filling station in connection with the Redners Market and associated parking lot on the property located at 1200 Welsh Road within the township's S Shopping Center District. In order to facilitate the proposal, applicant sought conditional use relief under the township's ordinance. The decision and order of the Board has been prepared, and the order reads as follows. And now, this 13th day of April 2020, applicant Redners Market Inc.'s conditional use application is granted. Applicant is permitted to operate a three-pump, six-bay gasoline filling station in connection with the Redners Market and associated parking lot on the property located at 1200 Welsh Road. This conditional use relief is subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall address all review letters, as amended, associated with applicant's proposal, and comply with them to the township's satisfaction during the land development process. And number two, the property's use and improvement in association with the proposal shall be in substantial conformance with the hearing and testimony and exhibits. That is the decision and order as prepared, and I'll return this back to Madam Chairman to see if the Board will consider a resolution adopting the order as presented.
Are there any questions from my fellow board members?
No.
This is just confirmation of the previous meeting?
Yes.
Correct. And additionally, paragraph 15 incorporates the entire hearing testimony and exhibit, so the votes that were taken and those that were in favor and against this decision have been incorporated into the decision by way of reference.
Beth, are you good? Any other questions? Annette?
No, good.
Okay. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby approve the decision and order regarding the conditional use application of Redners Market, Inc. Applicant proposes to construct a new gasoline filling station at the Redners Market in the Montgomery Commons Shopping Center located at 1200 Welsh Road, which is zoned as shopping center, which is permitted by conditional use. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am opposed.
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eight, Consider Award of Contract for the Nap Road Reconstruction Project. Kevin Costello, Director of Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. We staff received and reviewed bids for the Nap Road Reconstruction Project that was administered by PennBid and were opened on March 12th, 2020, at 10 a.m. The township engineer, Gilmore Associates, has reviewed the bids and made a recommendation to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, A.J. Jurich Incorporated, with a low bid of $595,065 attached to the bid tab sheets and the award recommendation letter. In approved final budget, the figure for the budget was $767,000. The bids range from a high of $858,526.60 to a low bid of $595,065. The recommendation is to award the contract for the above referenced project to A.J. Jurich of Aston, PA.
Any questions from the Board?
No, ma'am.
I suppose we have no clue whatsoever as to when construction projects can get started in the township again, though, correct?
That is correct. We have this job and we have three other bids.
So do our contracts have any dates that we need to adjust because of the virus?
That I would defer to Carolyn on. I would say this will be the award, so I guess really it's going to be pending the notice proceed when we're permitted to allow construction again.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Kevin? A nun. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby award the contract for Nap Road Reconstruction Project to A.J. Jurich of Aston, PA, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $595,065. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item Number Nine, Consider the Approval of the Nap Road Cost Sharing Agreement with North Penn Water Authority. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
North Penn Water Authority is replacing 2100 linear feet of water main on Nap Road and is required to do the paving and road improvements impacted by their work. Staff met with representatives of NPWA to coordinate this work with our stormwater project in the same area. In lieu of them performing the required roadwork, we discussed them contributing to the cost of the paving and having our contractor perform the work as part of our Nap Road Reconstruction bid. The township would receive $43,145.35 in exchange for the contractor performing the work, and the estimated cost and their contribution have been verified by Jim Dougherty with Gilmore Associates, the township engineer. Recommendation at this time is for the Board to consider approving the cost sharing agreement with North Penn Water Authority.
Any questions for Carolyn on this one?
No.
Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby approve the Intergovernmental Cooperative Cost Sharing Agreement with the North Penn Water Authority for the Nap Road Reconstruction Project and authorize the township manager to execute the agreement. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Ten, Consider Request to Waive Fee for Mary Mother of the Redeemer Catholic Church, Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
The township received a request from Monsignor John T. Conway on behalf of the church requesting that the township waive the demolition permit fee for the removal of the modular classrooms behind the school building. This request requires Board action as all fees are set by resolution. Staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors consider authorizing the waiver of the fee, which is in the amount of $554.50.
I think this Board would be happy to do so. Any questions for Carolyn on this?
No.
Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby waive the building permit fee in the amount of $554.50 for the demolition of the modular classroom behind Mary Mother of the Redeemer Catholic School. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Consider Waiver of Formal Land Development Application, Mary Mother of Redeemer Catholic Church, 1325 Upper State Road, LDS #710W. Bruce Shoup, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. The merchandise is requested of the Board. Consider a waiver of its formal land development requirements. The township engineer and the township landscape architect have reviewed the plan. Up on your screen shows what's existing today, the six units that are behind, the modular units that are behind MMR. Those six units are to be removed. That's part of the demolition permit. And then they will be replaced, okay, with two new units. The new units will be self-contained for restrooms and have classrooms inside, so the students no longer have to go into the main building. And then the last slide is the architectural rendering of what the new modulators, okay, would look like when the project is completed. In the resolution before the Board, our standard conditions, 1 through 5, and then there's four waivers that have been requested, and the township consultants agree with it. The first is to show any new landscaping. If we take a look at the first slide, Rich, the aerial, off to the left and to the bottom of the screen, you'll see heavy dense landscaping. There's no new landscaping proposed. This is the landscaping that was installed when the school was originally built, okay, over 30 years ago. The second is not to show the features within 400 feet. The third is not to do a lighting review. The only lighting will be security and walkway lighting for the new modular buildings. And then the last waiver is to allow Gilmore Associates to do the ENS review versus sending it to the Montgomery County Conservation District, which is running months and months, okay, now to get reviews done. The township will get the same quality of work, okay, if not better with the township engineer, and the project will be able to stay on timeline, so it's in place and available for September start of school. The recommendation is the Board can grant the waivers and the conditions imposed on the request for formal application.
Any questions for Bruce?
No. Any impervious problems?
No, it's actually reduced. They're going from six units down to two units. So it's a reduction in impervious.
Any other questions? All right. So the highlighted sections that you want me to read, correct?
Yes.
All right. The Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania hereby resolves to grant a waiver of the requirement of a formal land development application to Mary Mother of the Redeemer Catholic Church for the replacement of the existing modular classrooms and new associated stormwater management facility at 1325 Upper State Road. Attached here to and made part of and further granting, no, let's get the line, sorry. More fully described plans submitted on February 4th, 2020 from Mets Engineers as Exhibit A, attached here to and made part hereof, and further granting the waiver conditioned upon the following being satisfied by the applicant. And there are five points outlined. Be it further resolved that the following four waivers are granted to the extent that they concur with the recommendation of the consultants. And the four waivers are outlined in the packet. So the resolution, does it continue on the next page? Do I need to read the last?
That's the two highlighted areas.
Okay. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 12, Consider Waiver of Formal Land Development Application, Firefox Phase 4, LDS 710W. Bruce Shoup, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. This is known internally as Firefox. Publicly, it's Walnut Creek up on Bethlehem Pike on Line Street. The developer has obtained an area in Hatfield Township, the Old Wellhead, and up on the screen is the proposal for six units to be built in Hatfield Township. The yellow line is the political, the two townships. Below that is the driveway access road that comes off of the main Fox Metal Drive, which is in Montgomery Township. It's about 3,200 square feet of impervious coverage. The township engineer did an evaluation, and based on the original plan, that most of the units were to have two-car garages, the impervious coverage has been reduced on this property, so 2,300 square feet. We'll still keep in compliance with the zoning hearing order that was issued years ago, limiting it to a maximum of 50%. Also, on the right-hand side, going in the driveway, there is landscaping buffering because there's units to the rear that is required under the code, and the applicant has to show what landscaping buffering, okay, was supposed to be there. And if the township landscape architect agrees that it should not be installed, the developer will pay the township a fee in lieu of installing the landscaping within that, you know, it's approximately a 10-foot strip of land. The other, on the left-hand side going up, that's a wooded area, so it's not required. It's just that there is units on the right-hand side in Montgomery Township and Hatfield Township would be the backyards of those units. So we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I said, I was just saying, thank you. I thought maybe you were wrapped up.
No, I'm good. Same thing, the two highlighted areas.
Okay. Any questions for Bruce?
No.
Okay. The Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania hereby resolves to grant a waiver of the requirement of a formal land development application to Select Properties, Inc. For the proposed Firefox Phase 4 development, mostly located in Hatfield Township, more fully described plans as Exhibit A attached here to and made part hereof, and further granting the waiver conditioned upon the following being satisfied by the applicant. And there are six points, I'm sorry, five points outlined. Be it further resolved that the following one waiver, one waiver is granted to the extent that they concur with the recommendations of the consultants. And there is one waiver outlined. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bruce, you're a popular guy. Agenda Item Number 13, Consider Construction Escrow Release Number One, LDS 700, Police and Fire Federal Credit Union, 798 Bethlehem Pike.
Yes, thank you. The Police and Fire Credit Union has opened for business and then got closed down again, unfortunately. They're asking for an escrow release in the amount of $172,379.86, which is a bond that was issued by the applicant. The staff is recommending the release of the amount, $172,379.86, conditioned upon all the consultant fees are satisfied and a maintenance bond is submitted in the amount of $23,506.34 for the 18-month maintenance period.
Any questions for Bruce on this one? All right. The Board of Supervisors hereby authorize a construction escrow release in the amount of $172,379.86, as recommended by the township engineer for Police and Fire Federal Credit Union. This release is contingent upon payment of all the township's consultant fees and submission of a maintenance bond surety satisfactory to the township solicitor in the amount of So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 14, Consider Approval of Traffic Signal Documents for Proreal Ventures, LLC, LDS 699, DeKalb Pike and Welsh Road. Bruce Shoup, Director of Planning.
Thank you. This is a proposed car wash to be constructed at the intersection of DeKalb Pike and Welsh Road. As part of the review, there is certain requirements that they have to submit to PennDOT, and there's also an agreement that has to be signed with the township and the developer for the storm sewer connection on Welsh Road. At the bottom of the resolution, there are three documents that have to be signed by the township submitted to the developer for submission into PennDOT.
Any questions for Bruce? Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that the following documents for the installation and upgrades to the traffic signal at the intersection of DeKalb Pike and Welsh Road are hereby approved. A, Resolution Approving the TE160 Form and Approval Resolution for the Updated Traffic Signal Plan, DeKalb Pike and Welsh Road. B, Authorization for Agent Highway Occupancy Permit, HOP, DeKalb Pike and Welsh Road. And C, Indemnification Agreement, Proreal Ventures, LLC, and Montgomery Township, HOP Concerning Subsurface Stormwater Management Facilities in the PennDOT Right-of-Way. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 15, Consider Waiver Request from Saldo Code, Montgomery Realty Associates, LLC, 744 Bethlehem Pike, LDS #701. Bruce Shoup, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Yes, thank you. There's three waivers that were missed during the original land development, okay, granting resolution. They're minor in nature. The first resolution is to permit the development without installing streetlights along the abutting streets, Vilsmire Road and 309. There's a street light at the intersection of Vilsmire Road in Bethlehem Pike presently to permit outdoor sconce lighting, which are architectural lighting, but they are mentioned in our Township Lighting Code. The township lighting consultant does not have a concern because it's an architectural feature. And the third item is to allow two painted striped islands in the parking lot versus being concrete curved, okay, and landscaped. They're minor in nature, but they were missed during the first granting of this resolution. This is the vacant parcel at Bethlehem Pike and Vilsmire Road.
Right. Any questions for Bruce? Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township, Montgomery County, PA, hereby resolves to grant the two waivers outlined below for Montgomery Realty Associates, LLC, 744 Bethlehem Pike, and comply with the conditions of Resolution Number 14 adopted by the Board of Supervisors on December 6th, 2019. Be it resolved that the following three waivers have been requested by the applicant and are granted to the extent recommended by the township consultants. And they're outlined, those waivers are outlined below. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Agenda Item Number 16, Consider Approval of Landscape Architect Approval. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Township staff has previously met with designated representatives of the residential developments off of Enclave Boulevard, constructed by David Cutler, known as Montgomery Point, Montgomery Walk, and Montgomery Preserve. The landscaping plans have been reviewed, amended, reviewed, amended, reviewed, amended. We are now at a point where we have, per the Board's authorization, gone out to bid. There would be no impact on our budget because this money was received by the township as a result of the solicitor and the prior manager working to get the letter of credit and performance bond called. Staff is recommending the Board of Supervisors award the project to Gorkon, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of $153,828.96, per the recommendation of Boucher and James, the township's landscape architect. It should also be noted that since the packets went out to you on Thursday, we have received confirmation from Gorkon that their request for a waiver from the governor's office was granted, so they will be able to begin work subsequent to my notifying them that their bid was awarded.
That's exciting news.
Wow. Good news.
Fantastic. Well done, everyone. Well done, everyone. All right. Any questions for Carolyn?
Let's do it.
All right. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby award the landscaping work for Montgomery Point, Montgomery Walk and Montgomery Preserve Residential Developments and investigate the use of the Co-Stars program for the same. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Fantastic. I'm sure those residents in those neighborhoods will be relieved to see forward progress there.
So happy.
Okay. Agenda item number 17. Consider Proposed Ordinance 20-313, repeal of Article Nine Volunteer Service Tax Credit. Brian Shapiro, Director of Finance.
Good evening. This is, the next two items, number 17 and 18, are follow-up items from our previous meeting where we had determined in 2019, the volunteer tax credit ordinance wasn't meeting the true intent of what the township wanted to do and reward the volunteer firefighters for their work. So after reviewing it, we discussed with the board that we wanted to repeal the ordinance that was on the books and then adopt a resolution, which is item number 18, which would just eliminate the calculation based on real estate taxes paid or earned income taxes received by the volunteers and just provide them a flat credit of $300. So this is just a follow-up from the last meeting.
Yes. Well done. This is a great recommendation, and I'm going to go ahead and read this first resolution so we can quickly get to the next one and get this done for our firefighters. So that's awesome. All right. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery Township that we hereby approve the adoption of Ordinance 20-313 and ordinance repealing Article Nine Volunteer Service Earned Income Tax Credit and Real Property Tax Credit in its entirety. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 18. Consider adoption of resolution establishing volunteer firefighter stipend. Brian Shapiro, Director of Finance.
Again, just following up, you just repealed the ordinance, so in front of you is a resolution that mimics the ordinance in some ways, but then gets to a straight calculation of $300 per volunteer firefighter.
Here we go. Whereas, do I need to say the resolution title? Well, anyway, it's Resolution 20. Whereas, the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors wishes to create a first responder recruitment and retention stipend to incentivize volunteer first responders who are township residents. And whereas, township staff has created and developed an incentive program that allows for a lump sum distribution per qualified active member in a local fire company or EMS squad. And whereas, a qualified active member is a candidate that must be a resident of Montgomery Township during the qualifying eligibility period of January 1 through December 31 eligibility year, and who has met criteria established by his or her fire company EMS squad for meeting active member status during the eligibility year. And whereas, each fire company or EMS squad must provide the township by November 30 of each year a certified notarized list of qualified active members. And whereas, each fire company or EMS squad must establish written qualifying criteria for achieving active member status and submit it to the township by October 31 of each year. And each fire company or EMS squad must determine the qualified active member status of all its members, which will then be certified and notarized by November 30 of each year. And whereas, the township must vote to approve each fire company or EMS squad's written criteria for determining qualified active member status by October 31 of each year, and must vote to accept the certified and notarized list of qualified active members by November 30 of each year. And whereas, the township shall issue one lump sum check to each fire company or EMS squad representing the first responder recruitment slash retention stipend calculated in the amount of $300 per qualified active member in place by the fire company or EMS squad on the list, accepted by the township, and shall issue first responder recruitment slash retention stipend within the first quarter of the year following the qualifying year. And whereas, the township shall annually pass a resolution before the end of the year setting the terms and conditions for the first responder recruitment and retention program, as well as setting the monetary amount per qualified active member. Now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors approves by adoption of this resolution, responder recruitment and retention stipend for volunteer first responders. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Terrific. Thank you, Brian. Oh, we got you. We've got another one for you here. Agenda item number 19. Consider adoption of resolution concerning extension of real estate tax payment due dates. Brian Shapiro, Director of Finance.
Yes. So staff has been working with the tax collector in recommending this resolution that would extend the due dates, the discount period for the real estate tax bills and the face value of the real estate tax bills. We put it also in discussion with the county. The county will mimic any of our terms that we have for their portion of the tax bill because they are received on the same bill. So staff is recommending that we push the original April 30 discount period to June 30 for discount people who are paying taxes, and then the face mount to December 31 of this year. So there would be no interest in penalties amongst that terms. I did talk to Trish today, and you know, we did talk about how many people have already paid through their mortgage companies and things like that. So we do have a decent amount in, but you know, people who have yet to pay or are having a hard time to pay, we'd like to extend those periods out for the township.
I think under the circumstances, this is fantastic, so happy for the suggestion. Any questions for Brian on this? No? All right. This is another lengthy one, Brian. Thanks a lot. All right. Here we go. Whereas, on March 8, 2020, a widespread outbreak of coronavirus COVID-19 occurred, affecting the residents of Montgomery County, causing severe suffering to persons of Montgomery County, and has overwhelmed first responders, healthcare providers and businesses within Montgomery County, necessitating the issuance of a disaster declaration by the Montgomery County Commissioners on March 8, 2020, and a stay-at-home order by the governor on March 23, 2020. And whereas, the Pennsylvania Local Tax Collection Law, 72PS5511.1, grants to municipalities such as Montgomery Township the authority to establish the rates of taxes and penalties on real estate taxes, including providing for the 2% discount for those making payment of the whole amount thereof within two months after the date of the tax notice. And whereas, 72PS5511.13 requires that tax collectors hold open in-person office hours in the period leading up to the end of the discount period. And whereas, given the stay-at-home order issued by the governor, compliance with 72PS5511.13 is both impractical and contrary to public health, as well as the financial burden now facing many residents as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. Montgomery County has requested that all municipalities within the county consider moving the discount deadline. And whereas, the county has advised that municipalities may retroactively move the date of the issued tax notices in order to comport with the requirements of 72PS5511.10. And whereas, Montgomery Township recognizes the need for moving the real estate tax discount period. Now therefore be it resolved that given the above and for the purposes of 72PS5511.10 of the local tax collection law, the supervisors of Montgomery Township hereby prospectively establish that the date of the issued 2020 real estate tax notices shall now be May 1, 2020, with the discount period closing as of June 30, 2020. Thereafter, the face period shall run from July 1, 2020, and close as of December 31, 2020. No penalty period or associated interest will be imposed for the 2020 tax year. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Oh, I'm not, no, that wasn't me saying, no one said nay, it carries. Agenda item number 20. Consider reducing the paid bills. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. I think that's it. That wraps up our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second to motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, we survived our first live streaming Board of Supervisors meeting. Thanks, everybody. Thanks so much to all of our department heads, and especially, I want to make sure that we give credit to Rich Greer.
Rich! Yahoo!
Great job!
Our item director. You did an awesome job pulling this together. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Stay safe out there.
Thank you, Carolyn. Thanks, everybody. Stay safe.
Stay safe.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Good night. God bless.
Good night. You're welcome.
Live in three seconds.